Guys. Oh, actually, we don't have to rise. Sit down. Welcome to the Town of New Canaan Town Council regular meeting for Wednesday, February 24, 2021. It is 7:02 PM, and this is a virtual meeting. Those wishing to participate should connect to Zoom, but we also remember have people participating on Channel 79, where it's being broadcast live. The agenda. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to introduce two of our ninth graders from Troop 50619, Maggie Turner and Skylar Lee, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you like to say a few words before we begin?
We have a few things to say afterwards.
Okay, then why don't you lead us in the pledge? And then you can tell us what you want. Tell us about the troop.
Okay.
All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, what can you tell us about Troop 50619?
Thank you for having us tonight. As mentioned, Skylar and I are ninth graders at New Canaan High School and members of New Canaan Girl Scout Troop 50619.
Maggie and I have been in this troop together since kindergarten at East School. We have learned so much together over the years and are honored to be here.
Our troop is proud to have been recognized as the first ever recipients of the New Canaan Girl Scout Patty Zachalillo Community Service Award due to the Silver Award projects we can just completed.
For our project, Maggie and I and a couple of others in our troop focused on better understanding and building awareness in New Canaan for the negative effects of vaping.
We were just lucky to have the support from the New Canaan Public School System, New Canaan Cares, and the Youth Committee of the New Canaan Coalition, not to mention some of our favorite local merchants.
Most recently, we helped to get the word out with awareness stickers on takeout packaging from some of the places in town we love to go to with our friends. Tony's Deli, New Canaan Chicken, Club Sandwich, and Zoom Box. Here's one I saved from a breakfast at Tony's on the packaging.
Maybe you've seen the stickers too. We believe this is an important message for students and people of all ages to be aware of to protect their health and well-being.
We are proud to have helped get the word out and live such a great town. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Excellent job. Okay, your next assignment, your homework assignment, is to think of ways that the Town Council can help your efforts. Because my friend over there, you see him in the little box, Steve Carl, he runs the ordinance and he loves passing ordinances, you know, to make New Canaan better. Right, Steve?
That's right. We actually have talked about vaping and we'd be happy to continue the awareness. So thank you so much for all you're doing in the community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Excellent. Okay, next, I need the roll call and then we'll call the order. Rich Townsend.
Okay, roll call. Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
Mark Jemsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mike Morrow. Maria Naughton.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Rich Townsend. Here. Penny Young.
Here.
Okay, we got 11 out of 12. We have a quorum. Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. The meeting is called to order. Our second order of business are the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 20 regular meeting? Steve Carl has read the minutes.
I've read them.
Okay, and Sven is seconding. Are there any discussion on the minutes? If there's no discussion, raise your hand if you approve the minutes. Okay, I see John, Steve, Penny, Liz, Sven, Maria, Christina, Rich, Robin, Tom, Mark. The minutes are approved. Thank you.
Mike's here now.
Yeah, Mike Morrow's arrived.
Let the record reflect, Mike is here. We are a complete family. Next, we have public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their full name and street address, and comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? It's a rather small room. I only see Aaron, Chris, Michael Dinen. Okay, there being no comments to the Town Council, we'll move on to the next item. First selectmen's update.
John, are you going to do a moment of silence?
Oh, thank you. Would you like to lead us and tell us why? Penny?
Well, a former chairman of the Town Council, Lou Nunziata, passed. He was an unbelievably committed individual to our community. I can't even begin to list all of the wonderful organizations that he was instrumental in founding and be a participant of. And Town Council was one of them, I believe, 22 years. And went up through various positions and ended up being chairman. He was a great chairman. I have a wonderful memory of him always saying, Penny, I've got something that I'd like help with. And I could read the mischievous eyes glances to whether or not this was something he wanted no part of or recognition of and having to pass on. But it was always with grace and gentleness and certainly concern for our community.
Yeah, I think New Canaan would not be the town it is today without his involvement in the New Canaan YMCA, the formation of the Lake Club, the formation of our Fire Commission, the formation of our NICVAC, our ambulance corps. He was, and those are just the first four that I can remember, but the, you know, he left such a mark on this community. Thank you, Penny. That was a really nice tribute to a really great man, a real hero of New Canaan. So, thank you. So I guess, does anybody else want to say something about Lou? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next item.
I would, John.
Okay.
I knew Lou. He was my next door neighbor for 10 years when I lived on Ferris Hill Road. He was my dentist for probably 25 or 30 years. He was a really great man. You know, you've mentioned some of the things he did in Canaan. He was also a, in the World War II, he was on Iwo Jima as a medic. And my late father-in-law was a doctor on Iwo Jima. So, you know, people who went through that really did tremendous service for this country. And so Lou was a friend and just a terrific gentleman and did so much for this town. So I think we ought to just take a minute to take a moment of silence for him.
Okay.
So the Nunziata family is in our thoughts and, you know, we lost Jan last year, his wife, and they had a 65-year marriage, I think, and so they're in our thoughts and prayers. So I will give an update that I gave to the Board of Finance the other week. First of all, I mean, you listen to the Outcall Weekly and, or if you get it by email, we had one change since the Outcall Monday night where the State Department of Public Health came out and said that although 55 and older are eligible starting March 1st, that the town health departments must give their doses first to the teachers, educators, daycare, administrative staff of schools, both public and private, first. So our weekly allocation will be going for the next couple of weeks to our local public school teachers, private school teachers and the staff. And so Jan is working with the Board of Ed to make that happen. But the 55-year-olds probably should be up in about two weeks. Any questions about COVID? I think you, you know, the Department of Public Health, actually, there was a governance call at 5 o'clock. And the Acting Director of the State Department of Public Health sounds very optimistic. The things, you know, our positivity rate is down to the low 2% level in the state. Hospitalizations are down. Unfortunately, there's still a number of deaths every week, but I think it's going in the right direction. And next up is, as you may have seen from the press release we issued this afternoon, I'm very happy not only to have announced the cell tower last week, public safety tower, but also the AT&amp;T has signed on. That came as a bit of a surprise because in January they were indicating they were probably going to be willing to join, but then they came out and actually were in the budget from Texas for this year. So that's very good news. We'll bring it to the siting council and the process should only take six to nine months. The South U Lane Tower took literally three years from the time it was first signed until it was approved in October. So I think we found a template here that it's important to realize this in particular is a public safety tower. We were prepared to build our own public safety tower so that we have a permanent antennas to support our first responders in that northwest corner of town. And so it's particularly gratifying to get this tower done. And now we're going to move on to other parts of town. As you recall, we have, we still have pockets of town that need improved service.
Six to nine months until it's actually lit up and working?
Six to nine months before it's approved by the siting council. And then it'd be another six months after that to get it constructed. The Soundview Lane Tower is under, Tiger, is it actually, they pulled their building permit. I think they're, they expect it to be ready, operational by May. So it takes about six months to build after they get it approved. As you, as you know, we have a Police Department Building Committee stood up. They had a meeting, actually just this morning, a special meeting. We've developed two work streams. One, we're going to study the South Avenue location in great detail as to what could be done there with respect to either rebuilding, renovating the existing building, possibly building a new building behind it, possibly. And this will maybe controversial, but tearing down, demolishing the current building and building a new building that would be either emulating the current facade or something that would be equally prominent on South Avenue. And then we're also, and the second work stream, we're going to be analyzing if the South Avenue rebuilding or building is too expensive, which is likely to be. I mean, renovating a 100-year-old building is not a great idea to try to make it into a police department, a modern police department. We're looking at half a dozen at least locations around town that might be a place for a new building, the police department. And anyways, we're going to probably be engaged in this for two or three months to to study South Avenue and then also to analyze whether we'd be better off building a new building somewhere in town. The wastewater treatment plant, combined heat and power, is on schedule, I think, to get finished in March and operational. I think the only thing they're waiting for is the gas hookup in the street and the, most of the equipment is installed and ready to go. The sacks. We had a rather interesting, we had the monthly Selectmen's Advisory Committee on Buildings and Infrastructure. We had a good meeting early part of this month on looking at all the buildings in town that have roofs because the roofs are very expensive projects in many cases. The high school roof looks to be like $5 million or more. And we have about 37 buildings that have roofs. And we're also going to look at the heating systems and boilers in all these various facilities. So that process is ongoing. And finally, the budget process, Board of Finance is well-engaged in their process, looking to find some pockets of money that were kind of a surprise and also looking to make some changes, hopefully with the Board of Education with respect to how we help handle health reserves. And
What's that mean, finding pockets of money? Meaning pockets of money savings? Or are they finding pockets of money around Town Hall?
Well, we literally found some pockets. For example, I didn't know that we had almost $800,000, $900,000 in the Special Duty Fund at the Police Department because we charge a 15% not commission, but a service charge, and we've never taken the money out. We just let it build up. We also, so we're taking a lot, most of that money down. We also found, I think, $850,000 in the Playhouse Fund because we never took the rent out of the, you know, we collect rents, we just put them in a bucket and we never moved over to the General Fund. We're probably going to keep some of that there to work on the Playhouse, which definitely requires some repairs. And then there was a third pocket. I'm trying to remember where the, look, Linda, here. Parking. I don't think we're going to, the Parking Fund actually was intentionally built up. I think in 2012 or so, they decided to dedicate part of the annual revenues to go into the fund, and we've used that to pay for repaving of parking lots. And so that fund will not be taken down, I believe, Linda, I mean, I think we always do parking lots in addition to what is in that fund, but we have a big, big project coming up with the Locust Avenue Parking Lot, which is like $600,000 or $700,000, Tiger, and so we need that, we need that fund. But I think, I think we're maybe heading toward a flat mil rate with the various. I don't want to give it totally away, but I think I'm very happy to see some of the, some of the numbers we're seeing. Be happy to answer questions.
Hear that, Mark? Flat me up mil rate. See?
I didn't expect that. You know, I, unfortunately, with the selection couldn't get it down, but the Board of Finance has done a good job finding some, finding some changes that will bring it down. Be flat.
Excellent. Any questions for the first selectman?
I could mention the Playhouse too. I mean, obviously, Tucker and I and Bill Ossman are working on possibilities. I think there's a lot of interest, both with respect to being a first-round movie theater or alternatives, but we probably won't have any news about that until April. But we are engaged in interesting discussions about that.
That's very exciting.
John, just a comment. Kevin mentioned the COVID numbers and the vaccines. I've heard a lot of really positive statements out of our Lapham Community effort and how organized they are and how smooth it is over there. They've turned Lapham Community Center into a really efficient, and they went from 100 a day to 300, like, like, just overnight. So Jan has done an unbelievable job getting that facility up and running and getting our residents through there. So just want to get, let her know that we really like what she's doing and hopefully she can keep up the pace. It's not easy for sure, but she's done a great job over there. Well, in addition to that, Steve, the staff has done a great job, but also the volunteers, like your wife Tracy, have been very, very helpful to make the whole process work. And we thank, we thank the volunteers and we thank the staff for doing a great job. Yeah, it's definitely a team, and that's what makes New Canaan great. I mean, everybody pitches in and does what they need to do, but it really has run well over there. So great job by everybody.
Great. Went through at 3 o'clock this afternoon, got to say hi to everybody, and now I'm out.
You got your sticker. I saw that.
All right.
Thanks to your wife.
For Kevin? Any comments on anything he's brought up? Do you have any comments on the library? I know it's not on our agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I meant to mention the library. I'm working off the Board of Finance script from last week. The library, let me mention what happened on Monday. So, you know, we, literally for the past three or four months, we've been waiting to address the parking issue. We knew that the, the underground parking wasn't going to work. We asked them to examine every possible way of making underground parking work. They came up with eight or nine analyses of bringing cars out in different directions. The trouble is the location being, you know, next to Cherry Street, which is a state road at that corner and traffic lights that it just, it turned out to be over $100,000 per space to do underground parking. The center school lot is our most inefficient lot and always has been because people don't want to walk from, from there over to Elm Street, Main Street, Park Street. And, but then we started an experiment in January by giving free parking to workers downtown in both the center school lot and Locust. And that is turning out to be very successful in finally solving the problem of encouraging workers to not take more spaces closer to where we want shoppers and restaurant goers to park. So we believe and we've, that more than likely, we won't have to change the center school lot when the new library opens. But if it needs to be expanded, we have some scenarios that could add 20 spaces without much work at all. We could add, I forget the numbers now. Tiger, you got to help me. How do we get to 270? It's 173. We could add 20. We could go to 272. Right. Five, 230. Yeah, so, and if we have to expand it, we will do a study after the library opens and the library will pay for the renovation that lives required. So the Parking Commission met on Monday, reviewed the plan. In order for the library to get to P&amp;Z this week for next month's agenda, they had to file this week, by this week. And in order to have that, they had to have a parking plan that would be acceptable to the P&amp;Z Commission. We believe, based upon the consultant that we hired for the town to peer review the library's consultant, that the plan that is being offered will be acceptable to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It called for 76 spaces to be reserved in the front of the lot for library patrons. And so P&amp;Z now, I'm sorry, library will now file this week with planning and zoning so they can start their meeting next month. It'll probably take two, two months to, to review the plan. And we also, on Tuesday, the Board of Selectmen incorporated in those parking plan provisions in the MOU. The MOU has been sitting on the shelf for six or eight months. We worked on it last spring and summer. You know, there's nothing very exciting about the MOU. We, we actually took another town, I think it was the town of Madison, Connecticut, that had done a library. And we use that as a model because it had been done by the same law firm, our town attorney's law firm. And so it basically says that we're going to give the library a grant of $10 million. We're also going to allow them to use the center school parking lot. And, and we will have oversight. And so the MOU was approved on Tuesday morning with the addition of a new provision. It's made a lot of headlines. It was, the Board of Selectmen could not be the ones to decide what to do about the 1913 library building. So we put in a provision that simply moves it forward to the other bodies, both Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Council, to decide what to do about the 1913 building. My sense is, there's a Kathleen Corbett calls it a groundswell or so forth. I think there is a number of people in town like to see that building preserved. I can't predict how that's going to happen or whether it necessarily should happen, but we at least want the opportunity for the other bodies to make that decision. And it will be, should be decided, I think, in the next 60 days. And so I'd be happy to take questions about the library MOU and the process for parking, if you want to do that. John?
Is the library in agreement and signing the MOU? Is, does the library consider it the final MOU?
No, they don't agree with the new paragraph on 1.08. And I told, you know, I meant that very clear. The three of us felt that the work of the preservation should be recognized. And if, and if the consensus is by the Planning and Zoning Commission or by the Town Council that more time should be given or whatever, we ought to be respectful of people who feel that the building should be preserved. There are people on the other side that feel equally strongly that the, that building sitting there would detract from the new building, but the process has to play out and that paragraph was just designed to let it play out. I suspect that paragraph will change by the end of April or May, when, when it's finally finalized. You made clear, John, and Rich made clear, that you didn't want to approve an MOU until you saw what was presented to P&amp;Z. So that's why we're delayed until this time.
Is it in the MOU, if just, if it went through and the 1913 building was preserved, is it stated in the MOU, who owns it? Is it still the libraries?
You know, that's, that's why the library objects to it because they feel that the town cannot dictate what to do on their private property. So I think, I can think of ways that perhaps that could be dealt with, but it's not my issue to resolve at this point. I do think, I do think it's going to be subject to a lot of debate by Planning and Zoning and by you folks when you finally get it.
I mean, it sounds like coming at the same time as the parking lot, it sounds like a swap.
No, I just, I just think, you know, the parking was a genuinely, genuine issue where you simply couldn't do underground parking in that location. That would have been preferable if it could have worked. But also, it's also kind of crazy to spend money on underground parking if, in fact, sitting between two public parking lots, one of which is very inefficiently used. Why build parking when you have spaces available that probably solve the problem? So again, if we, if that doesn't turn out to be the case and a study shows that spaces have to be added, the library will be, will be obligated to pay for that renovation of the center school lot.
Is the farmer's market still going to be at the center school lot?
No, that's unfortunately, and that's caused more by our change of
What is?
Is that? That's caused more by our new policy about giving workers free parking because the workers come on Saturday as well for the restaurants and downtown. Probably for this summer and probably future summers. The lumberyard lot is always empty throughout, on Saturday. And it's particularly empty now in COVID. But the, we've committed to the farmer's market to give them a acceptable home, probably either lumberyard or the Playhouse Lot. And it's unfortunate, it wasn't the library so much to cause that. It's the fact that we really have found a plan that works for downtown workers.
Thank you. Kevin, I have a question. Given that the center school lot is town property under the BACH Amendment, doesn't the Town Council have to approve?
If, if, well, first of all, you're going to essentially approve the parking plan by approving the MOU. If, in fact, the future renovation has to be done, you would have to also approve the renovation plan.
Kevin, when did?
The parking plan is, is, is an essential part of the MOU, which you have to approve for the plan, the whole library project to go forward.
Kevin, when did you envision getting Town Council input on particularly the 1913 library building? When we, when we approved the overall MOU with the $10 million or at some earlier date?
Well, again, the, when did I envision? You know, I suppose the Board of Selectmen could have been silent about the 1913 building and passed down an MOU that didn't address it.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, the three of us felt we should recognize the fact that it's an open issue and it should be resolved. I don't know how to resolve it myself. Someone's going to have to resolve it.
Didn't, didn't we already resolve that or not resolve it, but kind of talk about this last year?
I think some, some people
Well, yeah, I guess my frustration, you know, Steve and I have been sitting on this building committee for the, for the past few weeks, out of the request of the Town Council. And I think Steve and I are pretty impressed with everything that's going on there. A lot of talented people working hard. My concern is that we're running the risk of sort of disenfranchising the volunteers that are doing amazing things there. We're probably also hurting the generosity of many residents if we continue to punt here. And I personally think there's probably greater risk to the town going, going forward if we keep stalling on this. You know, I think, I think the Town Council personally, it's my opinion, I think we need to step up and show some courage and leadership and move this project along. I personally think the MOU in its current form is, does not represent what we voted on last year. And I think we need to move to, at some point, amend it and happy And happy to do a special meeting or something, but you know, this is very frustrating.
Well, Mark, the MOU was always going to be for the amendment. It's not, you know, it's not.
I understand, but, but right now we have a stalemate. I mean, you, you now have a library. It was my impression that this MOU was going to be something that both parties agreed on in the current form and based on your email, Kevin. It, you have a party that doesn't agree on an MOU. So I don't under, it's not an MOU based on what I, how I perceive it. Because there's no, there's only one sided understanding.
Well, with respect to that issue, yeah.
Right. And so that's why I think the town, the town council, and you know, as you said, Kevin, and I appreciate, someone needs to step up here and move this along. Otherwise, I think it's just going to go on too long. And there's a lot of risk with delaying this, risk with delaying even the police building if we choose to do that. I mean, there's just, waiting is just not a great option. And it's just frustrating sitting on this committee with Steve and and now being concerned about even further delays. So that's just my opinion.
Don't they have to agree to it? Doesn't the library have to agree to it before we would vote on it? I mean, are they going to agree to this new section?
They will not. And based on what we just heard from Kevin is my.
So how are we voting on something that, as you said, is a one sided agreement?
You simply have to, you or the planning and zoning commission have to make a decision that's contrary to that provision and that provision will be changed.
So that's why I'm suggesting we, you know, have a special meeting to fix this. Otherwise, I just don't see how this moves on. Anyway, that's my, my two cents.
I just, I expected the MOU to be further changed by Board of Finance before it gets to you.
Okay, good, good to know.
Well, I would say, I mean, I think the town council basically voted to not buy the 1913 building. It wasn't, I mean, this is now a different topic. This is a different group preserving it. So I think it's different. I don't think we're doing the same thing over.
Wasn't the Butterworth proposal, wasn't that, that we wouldn't be held up for giving them a $10 million grant based on the 1913 building?
That, that's correct. But if you have an MOU where one party doesn't agree because of an amendment that we sort of already discussed, it, it, it's sort of the lightning rod that now doesn't create that MOU. I mean, I, maybe I'm unclear, maybe I'm not understanding how things work. But it seems like we're just going to hold this up.
Yeah, but they got 76 free parking places. Who's to complain? It's a nice trade.
But they're, they're, aren't they renting the spaces? Aren't they paying 10,000?
They're paying a modest amount consistent with what the value of those spaces are since now they're free to everyone else. But they were, they were being, we were charging $150 a year. Obviously, they do benefit in those spaces.
But they are paying for them, right? Isn't that part of the agreement?
Say again, Robin?
Sorry, they are paying for the spaces, aren't they? Wasn't that part of the?
10,000, $10,000 a year.
Yep.
I, I think we also have to be mindful, Sam, that we're going to run the risk of, you know, you have a generous gift and there may be some frustration among, I mean, I'm sure we've all given before. If, if you're, you think you're giving to X and now you're, you don't have a clue as to what you're giving to, you know, you may balk at it and I, I worry about that. I mean, that's a huge concern. It should be a massive concern for everyone on this town council.
Yeah, one of the things that we've talked about a lot on this building committee is the, the potential escalation in cost of steel in particular and in lumber, which is, you know, a risk that we're going through on a weekly, if not, you know, daily basis, along with potential interest rates rising as well. So the cost of this project, you know, we have to do what we can to mitigate those, those big costs that we're looking at. And I was surprised to see that paragraph in there in the MOU because I thought when the MOU after waiting, which is, you know, you six months, some say six months, you could actually say a year because the meeting that we had was a March 24th meeting last year where we emotionally came to the decision that we did. And that came after hours of phone calls, emails, you know, all kinds of discussion, leading up to the point where we took that vote. And that was a big moment. I mean, that was, that was sort of the moment where you say, okay, here's the beginning of what this is going to look like. And by inserting that language and, and to me not telling the library that we've inserted it, you know, this is, to me, I've always looked at the library as New Canaan and New Canaan is library. Town and library are working hand in hand as a team through this. It's a huge project. It's going to take everybody to work together. And if we're not completely upfront and on board, giving them the information, the back and forth that needs to happen, it's just, it's a courtesy where we shouldn't insert language and then say, okay, here it is without telling anybody. That's, that's the thing that, that I'm kind of scratching my head about after waiting all this time to see it and then getting it. It's a memorandum of understanding, but it almost seems like it's a memorandum of understanding from the town and not from the library, not together. So that's, I think that's what Mark is, is articulating here. So, you know, Mark's not alone. I mean, I was a little surprised myself.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from the first selectman is that this is the MOU. And this is as far as this board of selectmen is going to take it. They have an expectation that we, the town council will now take the ball and work with the library and other stakeholders, P and Z, in order to get an MOU done that everybody can accept and do so in the next two months. I don't know how we're going to do that. It's probably going to take a few meetings. I can commit to all of you that they're going to have to be public meetings because the public's very interested in this question. So we'll invite the public to these meetings. But it seems to me we're, the town council is being asked to, to figure this out with the library and the preservationists in a way that doesn't leave an open ended clause in the memo of understanding. And that what we end up with is a memo of understanding that's acceptable to both parties. And so, you know, I can't tell you how we're going to do that, but as we accept the challenge, we'll, we'll work with the other bodies to do that.
I mean, planning and zoning will weigh in on, on the plans and everything. It's, and, and there is a process that we'll go through to get there. But going into it, giving planning and zoning a little bit of guidance as far as the way Board of Selectmen's thinking, Board of Finance and Town Council. I mean, it'd be nice to give them some of that sense. And I thought that's what we were trying to do.
Steve, you have that opportunity. I, I think the Board of Finance hopefully will vote on the MOU by the time they vote on the budget on March 4th.
Yep.
And then in March, you, at your meeting, if you want to do it in advance of the P and Z deciding, you have that opportunity. This was unanimous vote by the board of selectmen to do this.
Understood. I just, you know, did you communicate that with the library, that adding that language?
The library says that they did not know. And in my conversation with P and Z today, I have to say that they did not have a clear understanding. So it looks like, you know, we just need to communicate with the library, the preservationists, P and Z, and figure out a process together to get to an acceptable MOU. The preservationists nor the library want this to linger on, nor does P and Z, nor do we. So we have a work cut out for us.
I think we've got to do this on the sooner side because it is possible that the board of, that the planning and zoning comes in with one position and we are diametrically opposed. I mean, where are we on, on this? I mean, so I think we've got to, you know, really get it on the table and work it out.
The, the board of the library and the preservationists have met and Sven and I have sort of been there as citizens, you know, not in our council roles, but to try to bring the two sides together at least two or three different meetings, trying to, to get them to come to some sort of agreement, some sort of, you know, answer. And after sitting through hours of the discussions, you know, I don't know that we're any closer to resolution. I mean, I think the library has its stance that they want to build this new building the way they've designed it. And the preservationists want to keep the 13 building in place. And short of, you know, I don't, I don't know that planning and zoning, it's planning and zoning's place to say, okay, let's just build the building. I, you know, I don't know. I mean, the, the issue here though, it comes back to the fact that it's private property. The library owns that building and the library can do pretty much what they want with the building. And they've offered it to the preservationists to preserve if they, if they can come up with a plan. And we've talked about this, but it keeps going around and around. And, you know, obviously we've got to make a decision because the plans to put a shovel in the ground are close. I mean, we're going to give our report later. Mark and I will run through the timeline. But, you know, the library is fully expecting that you're going to have a fence put up and a project going soon, within months.
But Steve, to be fair, the planet conservation and development has the library as being one of the most iconic buildings in town. And if PNC has it on that book, then it's up to them to decide. And I don't think that they report to the first selectman or to town council or the board of finance to report to the state.
And the other thing is we have always taken, we've prevented other people from tearing down buildings that's on private property. And that's part of the state statutes.
Agreed. And we, we've reminded them that side. I mean, I, you know, obviously that's the other side of it. And I, you know, I just, since no one's here from the library, I want to at least give that side of the argument. I mean, it's, it's, that's what's so difficult about this. It's easy to argue on both sides and we've gone through this on March 24th. Watch the meeting again. I mean, it's like we're having, it's like Groundhog Day. I mean, this is what I, this was, this is what gets me crazy. We literally are having the same conversation again.
Not exactly. The MOU has changed significantly since we last voted. It's just not true. So it's not Groundhog Day at all. This MOU has changed significantly amount and a lot of people have spent a lot of work in the last year and a lot has changed with respect to parking, the design and everything else, traffic studies. So I think we have to just approach this with a, you know, an open mind and get the parties together and see if we can get an MOU squared away in the next couple of weeks.
Does that mean special meetings, John? I mean, how do you want to do this?
Yes.
Yes, I'm afraid we have to. I mean, you know, we're going to have to have some special meetings and not everybody has to attend, but everybody has to be invited.
Well, isn't the 1913 building was one of the last things to be demolished in the whole project with the original plan anyhow? So there is some time to, to move ahead while holding on and working out the details of that.
That's the plan. You know, that's the, the way the cadence of the plans work. There is some idea about saving if, that the building is to come down. They want to save portions of the building and integrate it into the new building as an homage to the old building. There is that, still that plan, some of the stone, whatever is usable. And Sven and I have walked through that, the library recently, the old building. And there's, there's some beautiful things that you can save and repurpose if, if it comes to that. But you're right, Marie. I mean, it, it's, you don't have to make a decision to knock it down tomorrow. But once the, once the project starts, it's literally two years before you really have to, you know, make that final decision. But it's coming. I mean, you know, once they break ground, that's, that starts that clock ticking. And the, the issue that we've had from the beginning is for the preservation side of it, it's raising the money that it's going to take to do that and have a building on library property that actually makes sense to keep there and operate. And we've seen the presentation that, that they did. And while it was, there was, there was some good things in the presentation, it still leaves a lot of questions unanswered. I don't know. And I, and again, I, I don't want to go on and on about this, but John, some of this is Groundhog Day. And I'm, I, I appreciate your opinion, but some of this is definitely Groundhog Day. And I'll remind you when we're doing this, how much of this we've already talked about.
I don't think we should act as if we have plenty of time. I don't think that's fair to the library. I don't think it's fair to planning and zoning. And in this morning's Nickanite article, Ted O'Handlon, their lawyer spoke quite credibly about the notion that planning and zoning has to know what they're approving. They can't approve something with a future contingency that it may become something else. And I assume he's right. So whatever we're going to do, we really ought to try to, try to clarify this. Now that, talking about the Butterworth Amendment, the fundamental difference between where we are now and where we are then, well, fundamental differences, that was early enough in the process that it was intentionally designed to get the issue resolved rather than interfere with the library's fundraising activities. But so that's point number one. But the thing that I think that some people recall about it and they disagree with it and I, I respect that, is that my view was that the only way for the preservation project to really be practical at all, happen and to be practical is if, is if there's a, if, if the land changes title. Because right now, if, if you've got the library to agree, yes, okay, we'll leave the building there. You have no control or influence as to what they're ultimately going to do with it. Is it, is it going to be an ongoing discussion every month? Somebody, somebody's going to have to go in and find out if what they're doing this month, it works for them, when it's not part of their vision and it's not something they want to manage. So this idea of sort of making nice, nice through an MOU and saying, well, if we have a better relationship, somehow we can work together and all be happy. I just don't think it's going to work. Certainly the behavior or the, the conduct or the, the statements from the library side doesn't lend itself to that strategy at all. If there's going to be a clean solution, it either has to be imposed by planning and zoning or there has to be a, or the preservation that we have to work out something to where the library doesn't own the land. And I wasn't unhappy with it. I respected the solution that we, we gave. And to Steve's point, it was, I do recall the vote was, was, was it 10 to 2? So it was, the library relied on that, e- even though, yes, there are differences in approach. But they thought that that was a green light from the town, town council.
You know, if you, nothing has changed in a year from the standpoint of what the town council has said or done. I mean, we, I think, if I was to say what the Butterworth Amendment was in short, if I remember it properly, it is, we said, we're not going to, we're not going to hold your $10 million hostage to the 1913 building. And so we presume we're going to be giving you the $10 million and they've, and they've acted on that. And in all fairness, the only thing that's happened is the preservationists keep sending inflectors and saying they don't want that to happen. That's all that's happened is, is the complaint level has gone from 5% to 40 and it will probably go to 90 by the time, by the time it gets within two years. And, and so I don't think anything's really changed. It's just where nobody's standing up and saying, look, we took a vote and we're going to give them the $10 million regardless. So now what do you want to do?
But the reality.
I have a question, Steve, because when we took that vote, the impression I got, and this could be totally wrong from the library, was if they start this building, it's a different building if, if the 1913 building stays than if it goes, than if it goes. And so the two years is bogus anyways. Because they need, they, they wanted to change the plan if they were going to be forced to have the 1918 building. That's what I thought anyways.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't think there's any plan, there's no architectural plans that exist where that building stays. I mean, there's no, from their perspective, it's never been that way. It's been, they've planned the green there and, and, you know, and they're willing to help move the building or, you know, fund whatever, whatever, or help in whatever way they can. If somebody wants to preserve the building and move it, but I don't think there's any appetite for keeping the building where it is.
Yeah, I, it's, I think Steve made a point earlier and I just want to reiterate it because, you know, in sitting in with these meetings, they, they, they're, they have a timeline. And, you know, I think we need to be respectful. And I know a couple of people have mentioned it on this call that this timeline is important and the costs, I mean, Tiger knows this lumber aggregates, polyethylene, you name it, propylene, everything is going up. And even on these, these calls with their, their engineering firm, you, you get the sense that if we wait, if they wait, the cost is going to go up and I worry about that. And if we delay and we don't, we don't put a, put a foot down. You know, I also think they're going to lose funding and these donations that they're getting and their, their fundraising is going to come to a halt. And I, I worry about that stuff. Then we don't end up with a library. And ultimately, I know that doesn't, that, that's not in anyone's head right now. But, you know, I, I'm just looking down the road and it worries me.
Okay, I think that this is an important reflection on the first selectmen's report, but I think that we've given the public a sense of how members of the town council feel about the memorandum that was released this week, but we're not going to solve it right now. And so I'm going to just say I'll commit to working with Mark and Steve to put together a special meeting involving all of the other stakeholders in the next week. And we'll begin to move this process along. Okay with everybody?
You mean with town council?
Town council members will be invited, will involve planning and zoning members so that they can, we can understand, you know, our respective responsibilities. And we'll invite certainly library and preservation and 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 board of selectmen and and board of finance members. I mean, they're all invited, you know, to send a representative to the meeting and and try and hammer out, the specific task is to hammer out the MOU such that it can be signed by all parties.
Hey, John, John, just a quick question for Kevin. When when does Board of Finance pass that memorandum of understanding to us? What is there a date there? A date certain?
It's up to, it's up to them as to when they're going to take it up. I I my own view would be that they should take it up before they go out on the budget on March 4. They, you know, they they were heavily involved with its drafting, so.
But the chances that they're not going to, they they probably would just in, they would probably just approve it the way it was handed to them unless there's financial changes. I don't see them getting into the getting into the 1913 building. I don't think they would want to go there, but that's.
I don't know. As far as, as far as delaying, I mean, keep in mind that the library's been delayed in getting to P and Z. I mean, they weren't. I thought they'd be there back in October. It's the library's delay, not not anything the town has done. We busted our rear ends last week to get the parking thing done.
Yeah, so they're very grateful for that.
Okay. If if there's nothing further, let's move on to item number five, financial update. Linda, sorry you have to follow that.
There goes my over and under for eight o'clock, right?
Sorry.
Hey, no problem. So you have, you do have the financials in front of you on your tablets. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, you know, these are as of January 31st, seven months in.
Are you able to share on the screen, your your screen? You are the co-host. Can you?
Um, sure, I can. Let me do that. Let me find it.
We see your screen, but we see the agenda.
You see the agenda. Okay, I'm getting to the file. All right, let me start over.
You're on mute, Linda.
Okay, I'm trying to get, fastest way to get to this file is probably. Right, are you seeing it?
It's coming.
Yes, no?
We we still see the the menu item GF monthly report among a dozen items. It hasn't opened for us.
Okay.
Linda constantly complains that his internet home is not great and I know many of us experience that.
Hey, just while Tiger's on the line, Tiger, can you pass along to Mo's how great the town's been doing on snow removal and and the the work through these storms this winter has been phenomenal. So, you know, just take a minute and and give him, give him the thanks he deserves. They've really done a great job in town.
I will. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm constantly impressed. You know, you travel to other towns and New Canaan does an unbelievable job on their roads, so they always have, but you know, you get those consecutive storms and it's amazing they can keep up.
We're going to buy him a new salt shed. We're going to buy him a new salt shed, aren't we?
Hopefully, eventually, yes.
There it is, Linda.
It is. Okay, sorry about that. So these are the financials as of January and let me make this a little bit bigger. And so we're seven months in, about 58% way through the year. You will see that our total revenues are 141.3 million, which is about 95% throughout the year. This is typically where we would anticipate being this time of year. Just to highlight a couple of things, you'll see that our tax collections our tax collections are 136.4 million compared to 136.6 million last year. So we're somewhat in line with where we were last year. I did talk to Ro today just to get a follow up on where we are because we did do the 90 day deferral this year through April. We actually have about 80 tax tax accounts participate in that, which is about 1%. So those totaled to about a million dollars that's being deferred in taxes that those are due in April. And so we do anticipate that to to us to make up for that for that variance. And so that's just an element this year that wasn't there last year. So there is an additional million dollars that's kind of delayed in our receipts. So there are no issues as far as our tax collections by year end, where we we should hit the mark as we do in all previous years. Back to collections, back tax collections, we budgeted 250,000.
We don't see your screen anymore. You you stopped sharing.
I stopped sharing?
I see it.
No, I see it.
Okay, we see it.
Okay, I'm not seeing it. Carry on.
Back tax collections, we're on, we're on track, we're ahead. We budgeted 250,000. We're at 460,000, 417,000 year to date. Conveyance fees, we budgeted a million. We're at a million five, way ahead of schedule there. It is making up, obviously, our parking revenue is lagging. We budgeted 1.3 million year to date, we're under 100,000 because of some of the policy changes that we made. But all in all, all those other revenues are making up for that, for that lag. Tipping fees are on track. We were at 210,000 last year with 242,000 this year. So all in all, our revenues are where we would anticipate them to be on our expenditure side.
Linda, can I ask you a question? Have we gotten any real, any COVID reimbursements that would, that have come in at all during this this fiscal year? That are, and if we have, are they on this or not in this?
Um, let me see if I show that on here, other revenues. I, they're on here. Let me get you to that page. I do show COVID revenue separately. I'm trying to get to that screen. I lumped them in other revenues because they're they're a small amount.
Okay.
But we, oh, here we go. Yeah, so these are the COVID reimbursements. We've had, they're in three separate buckets. We got 317,000 is the major one for the Board of Ed and the town that we received. We received about 26,000 related to the Health Department reimbursement and then the town clerk. There was a small COVID reimbursement of 3,000 and then 14,000 dollars. So all in all combined, we've received about 350,000. The Board of Finance did ask me to put together a summary and I'm compiling that information. I'll be presenting that tomorrow. So I'll share that document with you. This will show everything that we received on the town side, on the Board of Ed side, what pots of money they're going to and what we've applied and is outstanding. So I'm working on that now. So I'll have that report for the Board of Finance tomorrow night and I'll share that with you as well.
Thank you. And that will show us how 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 much of what we have applied for, we've got, actually gotten back. So it it would show an upside if we get the other estimate back.
Yes, it will. I do know that of the 1.9 million that was approved for the Board of Ed COVID expenses so far, what we've gotten back that could be applied to that is about 200,000. And so there's some additional discussions on that rest. There were some rules. There are some rule changes with FEMA in terms of what could be reimbursed. Initially, under the previous rules, we were told that 100% reimbursement only applied to opening expenses beginning January 1 of this year. As you know, you know, our Board of Ed put a lot of work into getting schools opened last year. And so we spent almost, almost $2 million getting schools opened last year. And with the rule change now, there is discussion about allowing us to go back and claim some of those expenses because we had submitted those expenses and originally they were kicked back as ineligible because the rules at that time didn't qualify for reimbursement. But we anticipate that those rules are changing and we may get reimbursed for some of those expenses. So we're looking, looking forward to that.
Linda, how much in expenses overall did we have for COVID?
I'm going to scroll back. So on the very first page of this report, I actually break out the COVID expenses. So year to date, on the town side, we have about 290,000 dollars of COVID expenses in this fiscal year and we had about 300, 300,000 last fiscal year in total, throughout 350,000 over the year. So on the town side, between last, since COVID started, we've had about 600,000 or so in COVID expenses in addition to the 1.9 million that was passed on to the Board of Ed.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have as far as the financials reported. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think you're up next with budget summary overview of budget approved by the selectmen. Or is that also, you have more?
No, this, I'm just going to kind of talk through this. I I did give you the the first selectmen's memo that went with the budget, with the budget passing to the Board of Finance, which are the items that they're that they're working on right now. There are a couple of things that will change. As Kevin mentioned, the the budget that was approved by the Board of Selectmen to go to the Board of Finance total expenditures were 157.6 million, which is about a 2.5% increase. Included in that budget was the Board of Ed budget as was approved by the Board of Ed. The Board of Selectmen does not take any action on that budget as it comes to them, so they just passed it on. So that accounts for a big chunk of that of that budget. I think what the Board of Finance, what the letter provided by, the letter that the first selectman wrote for the Board of Finance kind of lays out the five key issues that Board of Finance is working on, which is what will lead to eventual approval next week. I believe one, as Kevin mentioned, is the Internal Service Fund. One of the things that we're looking at exploring the possibility is combining those funds. We've done researches of other towns. Most towns have one fund for both the town and the Board and the Board of Ed. As far as internal services within that fund, you kind of segregate the funds because that is required just for for underwriting and for stop loss measurement and so forth. So that element is part of the discussion that's ongoing. And so we've had several meetings with the Board of Ed. So that's something that's going to change moving forward. This year, part of the Board of Ed budget within their Internal Service Fund, they do estimate some additional health related expenses just due to COVID. Part of it is delayed services due to COVID that are never going to go. You know, you missed a doctor's visit. You're not going to double up on the doctor's visit. You're just going to go back and resume where you left off. But then they do anticipate that there are some services that were deferred. You know, if you needed surgery or knee replacement, you're still going to need that. You may just have that surgery later than you would have planned. And therefore, based on that analysis, the Board of Ed is estimating about a million, 1.4 million dollars or so in additional health insurance expenses from services that were delayed due to COVID. And so one of the things that the Board of Finance is looking at doing is similar to what we did with the Board of Ed, other COVID expenses, rather than front load them and pay for those ahead of time, we would fund those by way of special appropriation once the budget is approved. And therefore, what we would do then is we would reduce the total Board of Ed budget and not tax for these unknown, yet to be known expenses, but rather wait until we know what those are and then deal with those on a reimbursement basis as they become due. So that's going to be a big change to that Board of Ed number that was passed on to the Board of Finance by the by the Board of Selectmen. I think the other thing also in line with that, the Board of Ed also has about 900,000 in COVID expenses, projected COVID expenses, and the Board of Finance is considering doing what they did last year, rather than front load those and tax for those costs, just deal with those on a reimbursement basis next year, possibly looking at what federal and state funds we also get that could also offset those expenses. So that's going to be a change that's going to happen this year. As Kevin mentioned, we are also looking at some of these, we don't call them slush funds, Kevin, they're special revenue funds. And so we have these special revenue funds that 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 are out there that do have balances that can be used to offset, to provide relief to taxpayers and the use of the fund balance. So the Board of Finance is also looking at that. As we mentioned, we do have a parking, parking fund which has almost about a million dollars. One of the things that the Board of Ed is looking at is paying on an as you go basis because Tiger does have some parking projects in the DPW budget. So rather than bond for those projects, one option would be to use some of those parking funds that are included in that. Likewise, the police extra duty fund, rather than pay using tax dollars for police capital, like vehicles that we typically do on an annual basis, some of that money would be applied towards police capital. But the rest of that money would be applied as general revenue into the general fund, which would provide some tax relief. So those are the things that the town, that the Board of Finance is going to be looking at. The Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen also suggested that they explore, right now, we've been budgeting a 98 and a half percent collection rate. One of the things that was recommended for the Board of Finance to look at is possibly changing that collection rate to 99% and provide some additional tax relief there as well. But that process is ongoing. There's a public hearing on Tuesday of next week with a final vote on Thursday. And that's what I have by way of budget update.
Any questions, especially from Rich, my my finance committee chair?
Am I? Okay, I don't, I really don't have any questions, John. We've all, everybody on the screen here has been attending the meetings going forward and we've we've, we, I think all of us have a bit of knowledge about this and maybe not enough knowledge across the whole thing. And I I think later when we have the committee reports, we'll just talk about what we, the reviews we'll have, when we're going to have them.
And and solicit input on our, we focus, given the knowledge everybody has now, are we focused on the right stuff and just allocating the right time to it? I sent you guys a note yesterday that that laid out what my perception was of what people had seen and what, and some things that we might want to add to the schedule that were not on it before. And I'd just like to solicit either tonight or, you know, send me an email or something of where you think we should add or subtract something, something you don't think we need to look at or something you think we should add. So, but I think we ought to see what, I think we ought to see what the Board of Finance does with this off of Kevin's, you know, Kevin's recommendations and and then get into it and get going. First meeting is on the 16th of March.
Anybody else? If there's no further questions of Linda. If there's no further questions of Linda, he can go home. Oh, wait, are you home?
I am home.
I can't resist saying, Linda, that you're a very handsome guy, but you'd look a lot better online if you had a better wifi.
I, I'm working, I'm working on that.
Not for vanity reasons, right?
It pixelates every once in a while and then your face gets all distorted.
Oh, well, that's not good.
But your face is loud and clear.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further for Linda, and we will come back to the committee reports where Rich will talk more about the budget, I suppose. We'll move on to number seven, tax abatement proposed draft ordinance. Who wants to tackle this?
I'm happy to. That's fine.
Okay.
So we had our, we had a bylaws and ordinance meeting and took up this ordinance, this language that you see, the proposed language, this will be the first read, is up for adoption once it goes through the process. And, you know, we've, we've talked about it. Nick Bomonte, our town attorney, actually helped with the language. And thank you, John, for putting it up. This is the language, which, you know, I can, I can read or, or, you know, it's short enough, but it's for transfers of property exempt or that became exempt by reason of the property's acquisition by a nonprofit land conservation organization. Pursuant to 12-817 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the real property taxes due for any portion of a tax year paid or payable by a nonprofit land conservation organization shall be abated, even if the real property taxes were due for a period before the date of acquisition, but were paid or became payable subsequent to the date of acquisition, but in no case shall be delinquent or interest thereon be abated. Retroacted to January 1, 2021, any benefits authorized under this section are conditioned upon the timely submission of documentation from a land conservation organization to town assessor. As required and approved by the assessor, substantiating any tax payments to be abated and eligibility under the sec, under the section and the Connecticut General Statute. So this is the language, the draft language that's up for discussion. The subcommittee made a couple of tweaks. And I know, you know, that there's questions. I know Aaron is on the line and I saw Tom Cronin out there as well, but, and Chris Shipper was on earlier, but this is pretty straightforward. I mean, this is a, something that we talked about, it should be an easy one. In the subcommittee, we discussed it, but it was a short discussion. It's very, very straightforward. And I don't know if anybody has any questions, but you know, I obviously want to thank the subcommittee for the work putting this together. Tom, do you have anything to say or Mark?
I know, I just want to thank Tom for his input during the subcommittee meeting and everyone else's and also just call out Robin for, for work on this matter.
What, what did Nick say about effective date? It's just implicit that it goes back as far as anybody needs it to go back?
Yeah, he was very, you know, when, there was two suggestions we made. One was the date. And the other one, if you recall, was about the, the, the statement about the real property tax.
Personal property.
Personal property tax, right, right. And he agreed that the language, you know, we should change it as, as was suggested. And he thought that having a date on it was, was actually pretty smart. Thank you, Tom. And and get it. The data is in there. Back to, it's January 1st, it's retro to January 1st, 2021. So he said having a start date is, is smart. And then we, he said that there's very, there's a very slight chance that, you know, you'd have the property tax, you know, the, the actual personal property tax coming into play. So taking the, striking the word personal was also something maybe thought was, was a good idea as well.
Well, that, if he meant that date to apply to the whole, to the whole provision, it doesn't really work. I, I don't know that an effective date is necessary, but if, if you're going to have one, you really, it really ought to apply to the, all the language, not just the, that last sentence.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's, that's good. I mean, that's why we're discussing it. So what are you, are you suggesting a change? Where, where would the change be?
Well, I, I think that when we, well, it could say, do two things. It could be, say, you know, this, this ordinance, it could be the last sentence, this ordinance is retroactively effective to whatever date. And I don't know what that would be. Is that, that's January 1, 2021?
Right.
And so you could do it that way, or it could be in the, you know, normally we have intro, introductory language like on Housing Authority, you know, requested Peggy Danham, blah, blah, blah. You know, you could put the effective date up there. Either way, it's just, it's just puzzling why he would just put that in the second sentence. Maybe the easiest thing is just strike that retroactive January 21st that we have there and, and move it down to the, to make a final sentence that said this, this ordinance shall be retroact, shall apply retroactively to January 1, 2021.
That's fine. Okay, we can do that. It probably reads a little easier that way, too.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions? Tucker, just remind us, we've got this posted a couple of times, right?
Yeah, we, Pam's taken care of that. It will get posted. And you'll, if the final approval will be at your next meeting.
Great. Thank you. And thank Pam for us as well. We'll, we'll make, so Tucker, you got that changed? Can you make that, just move that, move that sentence to the, to the end and that should do it.
This ordinance will apply retroactively to January 1, 2021. Take it out of the.
Take it out of the body.
Okay. I'll send the draft back over to you tomorrow.
Great. So the next, the next step at our next meeting, we'll, we'll just do the final, final read and, and vote it in. And that's it. So as long as there are no other questions, we'll kick it back to you, John.
Yeah.
I have one.
Two, two week cycles. That's why the, the four weeks.
Quick question. We can't make a retroactive to when the Fowler property was transferred to the Land Trust?
We already voted on that, that gave them their money back, the 64,000 from last month.
Okay, okay.
All like seven different transactions they did.
All right, thank you.
Done the rebate.
Okay.
And just, you know, while we're on here, and I see Aaron there. Aaron, thanks again for, for getting this to us and all the work you're doing over there at the, the Land Trust. So really appreciate it.
Of course, yeah. And thank you guys for, for helping move this through. It'll make a huge difference for us. So it's much appreciated.
Yes, thank you, Aaron. Next on our agenda, if, if Aaron, you want to say anything at all, you're, you know, we're on channel 79 right now. You got, you got the, you got the floor.
I'll, I'll cede my time. I, I take up time at the, the four o'clock meetings and the advertiser. So, yeah, thank you though, John.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Number eight, Housing Authority. Tucker, I don't see Mr. Hobbs on the call. Are we voting on the reappointment anyway?
Yes, if you could.
So item eight on our Housing Authority, Mr. Hobbs, Chairman of the New Canaan Housing Authority, has requested that we appoint Peggy Danneman to the New Canaan Housing Authority for a term to expire April 30, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, who was that? Oh, Sven moved it and.
Second.
Okay, and Christina seconded it. Any discussion on Peggy Danneman? Does anybody know Peggy Danneman?
I know Peggy Danneman very well and she's.
Something nice about Peggy on TV?
Only qualified. She's worked on the houses. She's been working on the, the current housing project for, for low-income housing over, that's going on around Mill Pond right now. And she's very dedicated to that, that project and to, to affordable housing in New Canaan.
And I added her file to all your tablets. So if you look at that, she has quite, quite a CV.
She's an architect by profession.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We've had a discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. I see John, Steve, Penny, Liz, Sven, Maria, Mark, Thomas, Robin, Rich, Christina and Mike. So it passes unanimously. Congratulations Peggy to your New Canaan Housing Authority appointment. Okay, and now we move on to the committee reports. I need updates from the committees. The first would be bylaws and ordinances, Mark and Steve.
Well, you've heard, you've heard a lot from us on the bylaws and ordinances already. So that, no, no new updates, Mark, unless you have anything.
Nope, we cede our time.
Okay, next, education. Tom Butterworth and Maria Naughton. I, I'd say similar. We've, most, all the important BOE issues are, have been discussed by Linda and, and, you know, at a high level in terms, and Kevin, Kevin kind of gave it away that we're at level mill rate. So there must be something good going on. Come on, Maria, give me more than that.
Well, I think Linda confirmed about the COVID expenses. They're coming out of the budget. And I think that's, that's important. I sent that article around that there's a chance leaving them in the budget could make them not reimbursable at some future point. So I think that's a good move. And.
What about all the letters we've been getting?
I was just going to say that, you know, that's a, it's troubling to read so many, you know, different opinions and really passionate parents that the solution is, seems to only make half the people happy. So, you know, I'm, I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, like, it's, it's not our decision what gets done, but you could tell a lot of parents are really, the parents of the younger children just can't see how this is going to work. And I know my daughter went to East and that's the latest school and it's such a big difference to start earlier. So we'll see.
I think one thing that deserves comment there is if, if you step back to the beginning of the whole process of considering start time changes, if you were to ask yourself a question, will we be able to come up with a scenario that makes everybody happy? I, I think the clear and resounding conclusion of that question is absolutely not. And the more we got into the process, the more surveys we did, the more we realized half the people in town are going to be ticked off no matter what we do. It's human nature. It's, it's a major change. And I have a tremendous, you know, sympathy and empathy for the people that are, that have a lot of personal inconvenience from this. That was, that's inevitable with any major change. And hopefully that, those are things that, you know, they'll just get accustomed to it. Like when we, when we went to full day kindergarten, you know, somehow people got through it and we adapt. Why is a two-tier solution not going to make everybody happy? Well, of course, it was explicitly rejected by the Board of Ed. And I think the, the reasons for that, one of the reasons for that was that Dr. Lux, Dr. Luxie said that it would, it would increase bus traffic by 50% during a school transportation times. It was a burden on the roads. It didn't achieve the, the goal of having adolescents start no sooner than, than 8:30. And it had a number of other shortfalls that made the, the three-tier in the view of the Board, Board of Education, you know, much more palatable.
Since we've, since John, since we covered Groundhog Day earlier this evening, I'd like to make a statement right now that I would like to avoid Groundhog Day again at the last minute on this school start time stuff. I mean, I just do not want to have us living through that all over again. So whatever we can do early in the process to avoid that meeting again, because, you know, I know, I, I don't, I think I speak for everyone. That was not a very comfortable, fun meeting. So let's try to get to the point where early on, we, we figure out what we're doing.
Well, it would be nice if it was covered in the news in a way that makes it very clear that it's not the Board of Ed's decision. I mean, it's not the town council's decision how the money is used. So you know, and, and explaining the process of how the budget works, that would be nice to see in the paper because I think everyone comes out and, you know, comes after the last guy holding the, the envelope. And that's not good.
What, Steve, one thing that was discussed, it was important to, I think, several town council members last year, or at least also some critics of, of the proposal, is that it created a million-dollar embedded cost that'll go on forever. That's absolutely true. But that's, that doesn't make the Board of Ed not accountable. What it means is that they, in future years, will have to incorporate that and somehow live with that extra cost and may have to judge, switch priorities and respond to economic pressures with that extra million in there. That's, that's not something that's just lost forever. It, it makes them have to be accountable every year for it.
Yeah, I mean, and the approach this year of splitting it in half, too, is, is, you know, it, it's a, it's, I guess a good trial for us to see if it'll work, but it's, it, and I guess it's going to take them a while to get it up to speed. And obviously we'll be asking Brian these questions, but a million dollars is still, is still the number.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I don't think they would say otherwise. I just think that it, it's just more of a logistics question that they're, they're not trying to pretend that the cost has changed.
But just, Tom, a question, a question for you or Maria. I mean, as, as the Board of Education budget comes to us, they have no intent in, unless the expenses are cut or something of doing anything different than they propose, right? I mean, I know we've all gotten 20 or 30 or 50 letters that say they don't like it. But the Board of Ed, there is nothing in their schedule that says they're going to change. Right? There's not even really an opportunity.
Not at all. And, and yeah, I don't know, just to be totally candid on the, on the why the, the Board of Ed decided last time to not move ahead with start times. It wasn't just a question of impact on their budget, although that was very important. And it really threw a wrench in the monkey works for them to deal with the cut that we made. Having said that, the reason why they didn't take any time to really think that through is that from a, as again, the logistics point, you know, they, they couldn't in April, it's just too complicated in April to suddenly turn everything around, find a million and a half or whatever it was of savings elsewhere, retool programs, you know, it just, it just wasn't, it wasn't practical to do. And so, yeah, they're, they're done. Lawyers draw a distinction between condition subsequent and condition precedent. And I don't know which this is, but the point is it's done unless something happens to derail it.
They, they could change. I mean, there's nothing saying they could not change, but the plan is what it is at this point.
Plan is what it is. Thank you. Let's move on to finance and government. Mark and Rich.
Well, let me, let me just pick up the, 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 the schedule again for a minute. Is, I did send out a note to everybody and it's on your tablets of what I suggested, just as a, a starting space for where, how we allocate our six hours of time, our, six hours of time over the next, you know, the March 16th, March 18th and March 23rd, before we get into public hearings, et cetera. And just, just let me click through what's at all different than what you've been seeing before. And that is, at the beginning of it, I've talked to Todd, to Todd, and also, Luke and I have had one conversation on this. I think it would be nice if, and, and Todd has agreed with this, if the Board of Finance would actually give us just a short, a short presentation on what they're handing us and, and what they believe it accomplishes for the town and why it's the right budget to have. And Todd's, Todd's off thinking about that. And then I asked Linda if he would, if he would be willing to present a consolidation that, that just gives us a very high level. This is what, this is what all this detail means. It means here is, here is the growth in the town. It means this is what the growth is for the last three years, for the next three years in, in expenses and in revenue. And this is, this is what the implications are, just numbers, right? And just the numbers that are, that are turned in and added up. Just so we have a, a framework to look at when we look at everybody's stuff when they come in. On the first day outside of that Board of Education, Police and Fire, which is, I think, what we've had in the past, the same thing, right? And so we'd be expecting them unless we tell them to do something different to come in and show us the stuff they basically showed everybody else. And I would be totally willing to have people send through me to the people that are doing the presentations, stuff you'd like to see if it isn't, hasn't been covered or where you'd like them to focus in any, in any way. But that, that. But that, that, that schedule is basically the same right now. And then the next, the next.
Show us all his trucks.
Yep.
Vehicles that he's asking for.
Happy to.
The, the next day, I've done this just a little differently. It's the same stuff. It's, it's the town, it's public works, it's, it's, it's health department, it's parks and rec. But I've put in, I, I've put in two pieces of, of time to focus on, on the capital plan. I mean, looking at the way the plan is coming together right now, I believe, and I think Kevin made the point earlier, that I think the spending is coming in really quite well. And I think with all of the ups and downs with COVID and everything else, it's gonna be very tough to make, to make any significant, intelligent conclusions different than what the Board of Finance is bringing us. And so I think it's great to go through it, but I think the place that we can really have some discussions is to understand the capital plan for the next year or two or three. We've got a police station in it, we've got a library in it, we've got a lot of other things in it. And so what, what I wrote down here on the, on the schedule was I would like to understand basically the infrastructure plan. What are we gonna do with all the buildings, each of the buildings? Are we, what are we, what are we fixing? What is the basis for what we're doing? What are we doing with Irwin House? Are we able to move the Board of Ed out of rented space? You know, just those general questions, what's our strategy for the next two or three years? Um, where are we gonna be putting our money? And I'd like, I'd like to see the strategy, forget the numbers for a minute, let's see the strategy and then let's look at the numbers. And when are we planning on building the, the police station? Is it this year, is it next year, is it two years from now? When are we planning on funding the library and how does that roll out? And, and, and the other thing that I would like to understand, and maybe nobody else does, but I would like to understand the capital expenditures, how it splits between that capital required to support our current infrastructure, buildings and vehicles, et cetera, on an ongoing basis that we're spending next year and the next couple of years? And how much is being dedicated to new, to, uh, new infrastructure being added in town? And maybe the answer is we're not adding anything new, everything is, everything is old, but I'd like to get an assessment of how we're doing relative to keeping our infrastructure up for, and kind of as a measurement back to the dude plan. And then, you know, two or three years ago, we got a plan in the city, here's how much you guys want to spend. And I'd just like to see at the very top level, uh, how our capital plan of 12 or 15 million dollars or whatever it turns out to be, how much is going to support what we currently have and are keeping, keeping up at a very high level and how much is new stuff? And so that, the, I put an hour on here for capital and those were my thoughts on looking at capital. And I'm totally open to whatever anybody wants to, wants to discuss there. And I'm totally glad to, to communicate that to Tiger and Bill Ossman or any, anybody else that is, that is interested. John, how, then the, the last, then the last day, uh, March 23rd, I've got the library on, and this is library expenses, this is not library building, I don't believe, is that correct, John?
I think so.
Yeah, libraries, but library expenses and then general government. And I wrote town clerk down next to it because there was a, a really a pretty good discussion on what the town clerk has been spending money on and controversial things that they may be putting online, et cetera. And so I'll, I'll, I'll give you a minute, a minute, Penny. And, but I'm interested, anybody else, I thought that the town stuff came in very well. And we might want to look at it, to look at it. But, uh, but I thought the town clerk was where things really kind of came up.
Is that it right there on the screen?
That's it. Okay, Penny?
A couple of things, I'll, I'll do a, a quick one first. And town clerk and treasurer, I have asked Cheryl Jones, uh, cause I think she's doing a, uh, an analysis of, um, through CCM as to what, uh, town clerks and town treasurers are paid, because we have to establish that salary in this budget because it has to be determined prior to anyone running for office. They have to know what that position salary is for the next two years. So I will continue to follow up with Cheryl and get that information prior to our meeting, because we, you know, we've got to make a decision in, in our budget. Okay, uh, the second comment is, do you want Tiger or Bill Ossman or whomever to go through the entire listing of 57 buildings or whatever? We have 57, 58. And give an analysis of where we are, what we're spending on maintenance? Or are we current on maintenance projects? Or have we, you know, had surprises and now we're building, you know, acquiring new, new aspects of those building projects? I mean, that's, that's a rather, I don't know how soon you, you want, over the next month, you want that analysis prepared for you?
The, my, my answer is, I, I would, I would like just to know at the top level, we, we got a dude report three years ago, we're keeping up with it and we're, we're there at a hundred percent, or you know what, we've fallen behind by 50%. I, I'm not looking for details particularly, I, I'm not, maybe somebody else would look for them and want to drill into it. But I, I'm much more trying to come up with the town council, looking at the capital plan and saying, we're supporting our buildings to the level they ought to be supported in this budget. And, and so that's the reason we ought to, we ought to approve it or we're not. And maybe if we're being short, we ought to say, we don't, we don't want to pass this budget, there ought to be more capital spending on buildings because we're not, we, over the last three years, we haven't started to get there.
As I say, this is a little late to be asking, um, I mean, cause I think that analysis gets asked by, by the first selectman, when they get, and the selectman, when they go through the budget, as to justifying what their expenditures are. And it should be, you know, it's, it's normal maintenance on the building or it's anticipated replacement that as the, the dude report, um, you know, identified. Am I correct on that to Tiger when those budget gets?
Yes. The short answer is yes.
Yeah. So I mean, it, 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 it starts off being an administrative responsibility. I mean, that's what the first selectman does as he manages, you know, the department head budgets. That's not up, up to us, other than just from the, I guess, overall concept of yes, we are maintaining our buildings, which was the goal of the dude, you know?
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question, Penny. What, what's the answer to the question? Are we maintaining them or not?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Penny, the charter requires that the departments submit their five-year plans on capital, so.
Right. Well, that's why I said it's an administrative responsibility to oversee those.
I'm, I'm asking this poorly, I think, but, but my question really is, is to just, as the town council, to understand whether, whether we're funding them appropriately or whether we're underfunding them or whether we're overfunding. It's just that simple.
Okay, all right.
We don't ask for anything that we don't want, we don't need. So the overfunding question, statement is not, uh, is not relevant.
I think the fear is underfunding.
Yeah, the fear is underfunding.
It's surprised with a $5 million high school roof and he just doesn't want to commit $15 million to a police station without knowing if that's a risk that we just haven't been addressed.
Well, keep in mind, we spent money, $55,000, I think it was, five years ago to have facilities do come in and affect every building. So we have a schedule now and when something that, you know, coming up for this year, we look at it and, um, see if it really has to be done. Rarely, we, I don't know, Tiger could address it better as to some of the judgments that are made, but if a roof is due, a roof is due.
And Tiger's shown us through his presentations so far this year, you know, the major stuff, roofs, right, boilers? And, you know, there was a, what, a $33,000 miscellaneous, uh, facilities dude, um, you know, catchall for a bunch of smaller projects. So I think it's pretty much covered.
Good.
Asked and answered. Next, health and human.
I'm sorry, John, can I just ask one question? Rich, is your schedule available for tweaking?
Sure. Absolutely. That's the point of this is it isn't that this is it. What, this is to get, to get input, Tiger. From, from the town council, frankly, from you and Kevin or anybody else on what they want to make sure we see.
All right, cause just two quick comments. I went to the liaisons, it took two and a half hours. I went to the Board of Finance, it took two hours. And Parks and Rec, recreation is separate from parks. There's a recreation director and there's a park superintendent, the park superintendent works for me. He would be wrapped into the public work side. So at the, you know, looking at it, it's, it's a little light on time. Overall, you know, that's the only thing I was looking, I was like, wow, I don't think I could do, I don't think I could do the nine divisions in a half an hour and actually answer any questions as you might have.
Okay.
If you follow me, you know, and the capital, I think is a little.
Heavy.
Like, uh, no, I think that's, well, if you add the building usage in, uh, with capital at an hour, I, yeah. It's usually about 45 minutes for operating and about an hour and 15 for capital. I think that's what it was last night. I took her, was that right?
Yeah. Is there maybe a preference to starting the meeting at six versus seven? Rather than have it go later, start it earlier, some of these meetings?
It's Penny, I, and I'm gonna get back to a question I had when we were talking about budget, uh, earlier. To, to have the departments present to the Board of Selectmen and then the subcommittee of the Board of Finance and then the Board of Finance. I mean, how many times are these poor individuals trying to present the same thing? You know, and as I was, you know, watching you last night, Tiger, it was two and plus hours, um, to go through everything. And the Board of Finance, I mean, has gone through, will have gone through absolutely everything in, you know, minute detail. And I'm not abdicating our responsibility, but I just think it's not, not fair to Tiger to have him present hours and hours and hours of the same thing.
I agree with, okay with it. I just, I would rather, I'd rather have the, you know, the, the, the allocated time versus not presenting. I'd rather be in front of you telling you what we're doing and answering the questions. I just, I don't, I don't want to be shorted on the time. I don't want to have to feel like we're Russia. That's, but thank you for, first, thank you very much. But, you know, I am sitting in my, my dining room, you know, so it's not that bad.
Well, no, and, and, and we all are too. I mean, you know, it, um, I'm letting my dogs in and out the whole time I'm, but, but, um.
All right, are we good?
It's just, it's just a lot of detail.
If you want to amend that schedule, please, you have a copy, send a copy back in.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, yeah, which I, you know, it looked great, don't get me wrong, it was just, there was, I, I didn't, I just, at a half an hour, I, I'd be, you know, I wouldn't be able to stop and ask for a question.
But Tiger, the, the new, the new things that you'll be able to report on are some of the changes that Board of Finance may be making that they talked about last night.
Correct.
So you could take that time to report any changes because that would be new information.
Right. Right. And then I just want to be able to give it the time it's due. I mean, you know, the budget's $11 million for operating and $16 million for capital. When I, when I explained that to my 16-year-old son, he said, that, that's a lot of money. I said, yes, it is. So, you know, that was about all I could say to him, so.
You've caught him well.
Yes, right, so.
Well, I think, I'm not sure what the, Penny's comments are, you know, a lot of us in this room have seen this stuff and, and do we really need to ask them to do it again? And when I've asked this question two or three times so far this year, the answer seemed to me to be, yes, we do, we, we want to see it again. We, when we want to have the chance to ask our questions in this level of detail.
Agreed.
And Tiger says he wants to present to us.
Right, and I think that's great. And I think the citizens re ought to have the opportunity to see it with the town council asking their questions. I, I, I don't disagree with that at all. And Tiger, we'll make sure and get you enough time. Okay? Just give me what you think you, what you think these need. And if we need to go to another day, we'll do that or we'll do three hours in one day. However, however you're most comfortable doing it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Penny and Liz, Health and Human Services.
I'll just jump in quickly. Clearly, they're pretty involved with COVID, COVID, COVID. One of the things that came up, I mean, you know, we're doing a great job getting, you know, first of 75 and over population vaccinated, um, both here in New Canaan and as well as going to other area facilities. One of the things came up, or one of the comments that was made was that due to HIPAA laws, they can't, you know, Health and Human Services can't just call our seniors, even though they know who they are, they can't just call them up and say, oh, you know, why don't you get vaccinated? You know, HIPAA won't let them do that. So instead, you know, they're just trying to get the message out and it seems to be working. Another question came up about the variants, the different variants. And this actually I think is now been on the news, but there's only two labs in Connecticut that can even test for the variants. So, um, that's not something we've really been able to focus on. Um, and then just the other thing about the food pantry, there's still a high volume of people higher than normal, um, you know, going there. The good news is that they have had a fair amount of, um, cash donations so that they are in good shape if, and you know, look, it's looking better, right? But if, God forbid, they had to go back to handing out money instead of handing out food because of, of COVID spike, they're in a good position to do that.
Penny, you have anything?
Nope, that was pretty covered at all. Great.
Christina and Penny, Infrastructure and Utilities.
Well, I think Kevin covered what goes on in the selectmen's building and infrastructure.
New cell. Okay.
Which is great. Christina, you have anything?
No, I have no further updates.
Okay, land use, recreation, Robin and Maria. And that includes, I guess, conservation now.
Well, we're, we're gonna meet, uh, before the budget, but, um, some of the news from Parks and Rec is that Kuanis is going back to the Y using half the side and, uh, being open to the public for the other side this year. The Y just couldn't take on this year, um, taking over the whole park. Board of Finance met with Steve Banco, uh, their committee and some of the things that brought up was, um, paddle has been doing incredibly well and bringing in a lot of money. So there was discussion of extending it, opening up the hut year round as well as, uh, extending clinics. And I believe that now the reservation system is going to be year round, but it might just be a, you know, uh, online, so there won't be an attendant there. But I think there's still discussions, um, might be an attendant at the high school and otherwise. Oh, there was an issue with the MOU with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, uh, that fees not being collected. So I think there's gonna be more discussion on that, but, um, uh, yeah, the, our, these weren't being, uh, playing field fees weren't being collected. No, no, is Steve, Steve's not on here. You could probably talk to that. And, I mean, those were the big ones, paddle, Kuanis, Fields, and then for conservation, they just talked about food scrap program, um, some of the, the capital request for Bristow, 112,000. And then just some of the items that are going into Bristow as well as their line item for 50,000 for land acquisition funds. And that's it.
And Tiger's getting a pickleball courts.
We're gonna try, Stan.
Where?
Meat Park. The, uh, the existing, um, all surface court will be changed over to pickle.
But you have to pull up the whole thing now, right? Because of the tree roots?
We have to take the whole thing out, yeah, unfortunately. And then rebuild the entire court along with the, um, the playback wall will be all one level. And then we'll make that all pickle and include the playback, playback wall. So you can play tennis against the playback wall and then just still play pickle at the same time. That's the, that's the overall thought. It's the overall goal is to convert that over to, uh, to pickle. Pickle's, uh, yeah, probably it's the biggest booming sport out there right now, so.
Also, also a shout out to Kevin and to get, for getting the security cameras underway. That, that was, uh, something that's been followed and, uh, well done getting that, uh, getting it up and running. So that's, you know, the, the entrances and exits at Wavine, it's a good start. So that was good news.
Yeah, that's a good segue into public safety, Liz and Mike. Our final report.
Sure, um, it's pretty quiet with fire. Uh, one thing I noticed is the, um, plans for the elevator and the accessible bathrooms at Wavine have been approved by the fire marshal. plans for the elevator and the ba-, um, accessible bathrooms at Wavine have been approved by the fire marshal. Tiger, do you know anything further about that in terms of timing?
The elevator and the bathrooms?
Yeah.
We postponed that. Um, there's still, uh, funding required for that. So that's actually not in our capital plan for this year. It's in our capital plan for next year. Um, there was a thought that um, further study had to be, uh, had for what we were going to use the house for. Moving forward, before we went forward with that, we are currently doing, um, the work on the western ramp, uh, the loge and the fire escape in the back. That work is ongoing now. That was with existing funds. Um, that was phase three. We put it to phase one. And, uh, that should be done in June, June slash July of this year.
Right. Right.
You're welcome.
Um, as far as police goes, uh, Kevin covered, I think, one of the biggest issues, the building committee and how that's progressing. Um, uh, the chief is still working on the issue with the, um, the sheltering of pets, you know, the animals, uh, that get taken into custody. We had a meeting oh, I don't know how many weeks ago to discuss potential options. Tiger was on that call as well. So there was a couple of ideas that were discussed and hopefully we can take a closer look at that. Uh, and then the other big one was I, I, in my opinion, is the, um, the cameras at Wavine being installed at the, uh, the entrances as far as we know, but because it's a security issue, there's not much that can be released, uh, to the public as far as I know. Other than that, that's it.
Can I just mention that, uh, I believe Sven was recognized for 42 years as a volunteer at the, uh, fire department?
Yes.
Wow. Have you gotten better at it in 42 years?
Um, I, I think I reached my peak a number of years back and, um, you know, fighting fires with my old buddy Scott Ready inside, you know? That was, uh, those were good times, but, uh, we're, we're all past that.
All right. And you're still recruiting for the, the next Sven? Uh, you're, you're, you're recruiting new? Uh, how's recruiting going?
Hasn't been a great year.
All right. That's why I mentioned it on channel 79. Hopefully somebody out there is watching this and give you a call and volunteer.
But, you know, the house is opening up. Um, you know, most of the guys you know, we're getting toward 90% of the people who've had their second shot in two weeks, you know, of breathing space. So, um, you know, the chief is getting ready to open the house back up again, but we're still subject to, uh, you know, the, uh, town meeting rules. So.
All right.
So wait, sorry. John, can I just ask you guys to do one thing retroactively for me here? Um, when we talked about the change to the draft ordinance, I think we should vote on that so that it can get posted. Um, we, we talked about it, but I think we need a vote. So, um, could you call that for me?
Okay. So I'm going to put it on our screen. Let's see. Share. You all see it. Tax ordinance. Uh, Tucker, can you tell me what the, um,
So the last, we're going to take out, uh, sort of halfway down on the right-hand side, the retroactive to January 1st, 2021 sentence. And we're going to add that to the end saying that retroactive, uh, this ordinance will apply retroactively to January 1st, 2021.
All right. Do I have a motion? Christina, second, Rich, all in favor? Uh, John, Sven, Liz, Penny, Steve, Maria, is that a Maria? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thomas, Mike, Christina, Rich, Robin. It's unanimous.
Thank you. This way, this way it can get now get posted and you'll get the timing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tucker. Is there anything further before we adjourn?
Yeah, John, I have a question. Are, with the volunteers for the fi- uh, firehouse and EMS, are they using the tax abatement ordinance or do they have access to all that? And is it being publicized to get new volunteers?
I got an email from, uh, uh, Assistant Chief Kimes today. And it was to all volunteers and, um, they were talking about, um, in the beginning, he was talking about us, uh, 20-plus year lifers, but, uh, had passed the, uh, whole ordinance, you know, back so that everybody could see the PDFs of what's available so that the guys know that it's out there.
So who, who sends? Cause doesn't it have to go like the BOF and then the, the recreation department, the names of all the people? Is that just given when they're volunteers or do they have to go seek that out themselves?
Uh, I'm sorry. I couldn't quite hear you, Robin.
All right. So in the ordinance, wasn't it that you had to, uh, give the information of the volunteers to the board of finance? I think the town council as well as the recreation department, is that just on automatically?
No, um.
I have it here. So, um, it does say, uh, the res-, um, submit a certification of eligibility of eligible residents, eligible non-residents to the tax collector for the town of New Canaan and forward a copy of their certifications to the board of finance, office of first selection, office of tax assessor, recreation department, fire commission and EMS commission. Is that what you're referring to, Robin?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to know, is that automatically just sent out or did they need to request that to be done? The volunteers?
Um,
I, I can chime in on that.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes. So the way that, uh, and we've had several meetings with, uh, tax collector and, um, and, and Sebby, um, and EMS and, and, and fire. So the, the certif- the certified list, um, will come, will come to us, but then what, what we've developed, we've developed a form that each individual will have to, to complete just as backup for, for the system because we will need, for those that live out of town, uh, we will actually be, and I spoke with a tax collector and assistant Norwalk. This is how they do it. For those that live out of town, we actually send the payments to that tax office on their behalf. So we would need some documentation like their, their tax bill and so forth. So we have, we have accounting of that. But once we have all of that information, it will go through the various boards, um, similar to the way we do the, the refunds on the tax overpayments. It'll go with the board of selectmen that gives us permission to issue the check. And you will get, uh, get the copies. On the meetings we had yesterday, this will become effective July 1 of this coming, this July, this July 1 coming up. And so we would get the certified names. I believe the ordinance is March 31st. Uh, but obviously because the tax bills, most tax, most cities don't send out, don't send us out until mid-June. And so we won't have that as backup to send the payments, but once we get those, our goal is to send those payments to those that are eligible, uh, the first two weeks of July, um, on their behalf.
Thank you. If there's nothing further?
John, just one more thing. I'm sorry. Uh, the, Mark and I have attended four, uh, library building committee meetings and I just want to get a sense of the council. Would, does the council want a report? I think a monthly report would be in order. Um, and you know, we're preparing tonight, but I don't want to go into it now, but um, we can give a monthly report and an update on the progress of that building committee, much like we did with the high school or SACs. So just, I just want to throw that out there that we're, we're more than happy to share everything that we have, you know, that we glean from those meetings. So I'm happy to, if you want, if you want to put us on with the committee reports or you want to put us on as a lineup or whatever, however you want to do it. It's probably, but we will be giving a monthly report.
I assumed, I assumed it would be a committee report and it would just be folded into the existing infrastructure report at whatever order you want.
Okay.
We can add it as a line. Tucker, just add it as a permanent line so that I'm, I'm reminded to, to ask for it.
In the committee report section.
Yeah, in the committee report, say library, because we have a special, you know, a special, uh, committee for that.
Okay.
Thanks.
I was intending to ask you for your report tonight, but we spent a good deal of time at the, at the first selectment portion of the meeting, talking about the library. So I figure we all got our, our two minutes of fame.
All good.
Okay. If nothing further, motion to adjourn? Oh, I think Mark is raising his hand. Yes. Mark has, has a motion to adjourn. Second, Maria, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.